To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Ms. Anderson.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
Tonight, we have the minutes from the August 4th, 2020 council meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm a Democrat, but I'm hoping a speedy recovery for Mr. Trump. Frankly, it makes me sick that we have many Democrats laughing and wishing for death of another man. Let's be better. My name is Lexi Fernandez, founder of the Anti Corruption Party in Middletown and the official local hour revolution group called Stop the Corruption. That being said, all of this, all this chaos was inevitable when we don't have wise leaders in government. We, the people, are trying to ring the bell of democracy and liberty, but the rust of corruption and big money in politics threatens the integrity of the whole system. When I was younger, I thought corruption was always out there, outside, at a national level. Never did I think greed was here, inside, in a local level, a personal level even. Because of greed, we are poisoning our air, and I'm not only talking about the forest fire smoke that reached us from the other side of the United States, but locally, from the smoke of the new power plant that is one or two miles away from our local elementary school, a school that, if I remember correctly, doesn't exist anymore because our local government refused to help and prioritize education when our school board asked for help from our mayor and common counsel. Woe to the schools now. Instead, support went to the CPV power plant. I wish our mayor wrote a strong letter of support for our local education, but instead, he wrote one for the power plant. When our mayor first started, the salary for the position was around fifteen to thirty thousand, and I respected that because my dad, an NYPD officer, taught me that heroes do the right thing because it is the right thing to do. But now, our same mayor makes six to twelve times as much. That is a hell of a pay raise, but it should have been decided here directly by us, the people, in an election of ideas, not last minute by a group of crony lawmakers, one of which was appointed to the elected position by Joe himself. In 2017, never did I think a local election would be won before Election Day, before any ballot was taken, and I'm afraid of the rigging that is happening now nationally on both sides. I started the Anti Corruption Party to run Joe out of town, but the Republican committee chairperson was able to remove our anti-corruption candidate from the ballot, leaving us with no other options, even though the mayor is a Democrat. Talk about collusion. That's why I'm begging people who aren't on the left or the right to run for office. We need to vote out these career politicians because I'm already, because it might already be too late for democracy, but you might be our last chance. We have the world's greatest people, so please run and take money out of politics. Stop the government waste.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
My name is Rosemary Kearns. For the past forty-five years, my husband and I have lived on Lennox Place. During these four and a half decades, I have never felt the need to address this council. That is, until now, with the prospect of the St. Paul's Church warming station moving to Temple Sinai for the upcoming winter season. I stand with my neighbors in opposition to this plan. It is a quality of life issue for us. Please don't misunderstand, I'm not opposed to helping the homeless, but bringing thirty members of an unstable population to an overnight homeless shelter in a residential, family-oriented neighborhood is not the answer to the problem of relocating the warming shelter. A more collaborative, coordinated, and comprehensive solution involving state and local government and social services is needed. So I'm hoping that all levels of government can work together to provide a more, to provide more than a stopgap solution to a serious, ongoing, and growing problem. A more equitable solution is required for all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vanessa Diaz. I also reside on Lennox Place, and I also oppose of the warming station. Like Rosemary said, we're not against helping people that need a home. I just don't think that we should have it in our backyard. As I stated the first time I came up here to talk about it, we weren't asked how we felt about it, and I've done my research, so I want to stand firm on the words that I did use. It's, we're getting stuck with criminals, and we're getting stuck with people that are drug addicts. And like I said before, I'm a mom of three, and I just don't think that's something that I want my kids to see. I also did my homework on Honor, which I know that they offer great services to people that don't have homes. So why can't these people just go to Honor? Instead, we're housing, or we're giving people room that are criminals, you know? Crime is going to go up in my neighborhood, and I just feel like we're being stuck with criminals because the homework that I did in Honor states that they do do a background on the people that go there. So when they stood up here in the last meeting and said that I used the wrong word, or I'm against housing people, I know I didn't use the wrong word because the people that choose only to go to warming stations are people that don't want help. They said they were opening this warming station because they didn't want people to freeze to death at night, but what about them freezing to death during the day when they have to leave all those hours? Where are they? Looting my neighborhood. It's very unfair, and I hope that maybe somehow this can change and the warming station be moved where there's no residents, you know? I know that Middletown's very big, and I know there's a lot of places, like Ralph said, where you can open up a building, and if you really want to do a warming station, house these people. It's unfair that it was just brought and thrown into our neighborhood without us being asked of. So I hope tonight, or if my word means anything, that this can somehow change and the area of the warming station be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph, do you want to go first? Is that ready?
Good evening. Ralph John Savarish, 36, Lennox Place. In 1956, Charles Dillon Stangle in St. Petersburg, Florida, had a dilemma. He had to address his Yankee team who had just lost the World Series, and he designated an individual named Lawrence Peter Berra to address the troops. And Lawrence Peter Berra, aka Yogi, simply said, "It ain't over till it's over." And that's what this is all about. As you can see here, there's a group of people who are very, very concerned about this situation, and rightly so. The article I gave you was fact. I was involved in that situation, by the way. That's a fact. This individual killed the security guard. Okay? And to show you the county's response on that situation, that program was closed. All those folks was transported to Middletown at 75 West Main. Then they got the contract back and opens up again. In the past year, they had a hundred and seventeen police calls, which goes to show you the volatility of this population. This is also a situation, the case of two Aldermen. We're blessed with Andrew Green. He has been responsive to our needs, our agenda. He has got our backs. He's been transparent through the whole process. I cannot say the same about his counterpart. This particular situation, I learned, took place in March. This decision was made in March, and we did not know about it until August. Is that fair? Shouldn't we have been involved in that process? That didn't happen. Yet, that other Alderman was involved in that process. He knew about it. This is a county problem, as the mayor rightly said the last time we had a big meeting, and the county needs to step up to the plate, because this is not a City of Middletown issue. As it is now, the City of Newburgh has five, five full-time shelters and a warming station. The City of Middletown has three, not just Honor. Everybody at 75 West Main is homeless. Everybody in the Globe Hotel is homeless. So there are three shelters in the City of Middletown, and they still can't solve the problem. From motels and hotels from Monroe to Fair Oaks, from Newburgh to Port Jervis, homeless individuals. No plan. No plan. And this needs to be addressed. Now, what can the common council do? Because it's a done deal. You're responsible for the safety and welfare of us and our property. You have to ensure that if this thing takes place, it's going to be run right. I'm cut off already. So that's the thing that needs to be done here, and one of the things that can happen here, too, if you can consider a resolution supporting us in this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks, you know, for listening to our complaints and stuff like that, we really appreciate it. My name is Greg Wilson. I'm located at 67 Highland Avenue, and I am directly affected by the warming station. So this warming station is right at our house, and my wife is absolutely terrified because the procession of individuals coming from downtown Middletown is going right by our house in our driveway, where we actually exit and take our dog out to the front, and so they're there. And there's a lot of times during the winter, I'm working light hours, so she is absolutely terrified. We have two small children, they're ten and seven, that they're going to be looking into our house, which is, you know, we feel bad for these people, we really do, and we know most of them are good people, and they need a one place. We're worried about the one or two people that are off their meds, that are angry, and are going to come and possibly knock on our door, kick down our door, or cause problems because life isn't fair, and then we understand that they're dealing with a lot. We're also very concerned that they do not have a plan if the people exceed thirty-five people, or if there's people on the list, which I didn't know this, that may be just rejected, even if they don't have enough space for them, that there's no plan to get them to the police station. And there's also no plan, there's this inclement weather, when they're kicked out at, you know, at seven o'clock, what happens if the roads are impassable? Where are these people going to go? How are they going to get back to downtown Middletown for the church for breakfast and sti- and are they going to wander? We hear a lot of stories where people don't leave, they stay around the area, and this is a direct threat to our house and my family, and they have brought this to our house. So please, if there's any way to push them to get some sort of plan, that they protect the community as well as the people they're trying to help, would greatly be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on, would like to address the council? Eileen, do we have anybody online?
We do, Norman.
Okay. Martha Mayer?
Well, I want to begin with thanking the neighbors for coming in once again and voicing their concerns. We had a lengthy meeting regarding this, and I just want to point out a few facts. One is that we don't have an option, so it's not the City of Middletown, and Ralph correctly pointed out that we had an in-depth discussion about this regarding the county's role in housing the homeless and their lack of planning and comparison to what other counties have done. So, as you know, a church can do what they call a sanctuary or housing without going through local zoning, so in regards to what they're doing at the temple, we don't have a voice there, but we do have a voice in other ways. And I didn't know about this in March, and I don't believe Andrew knew about it in March. When I found out in August, I did have discussions with Andrew and Mr. Kleiner also, and we've been working since then to try to find an alternative location. When we first met, first, I don't want to pin a negative label on the temple either. I think churches do step forward, they have a mission that's different than ours, maybe different than, I think we've made clear, separate from the neighborhood's interests. I think they made that clear, but we have an interest for both, and we have, we have an obligation to protect the neighborhood and to also assist in housing people with needs. So the good news, I think, is that myself and Andrew met about two weeks ago with, and we're not at liberty to discuss where at this point, but we have met with another church that has some space. I immediately reached out to Rabbi Rubenstein and the Middletown Interfaith Council, and they were true to their word that night when they said, "It's our preference not to have it at the temple either." The temple is a stopgap because of COVID and all the reasons that they gave at that meeting, but we all have different interests. Our interest is to protect the neighborhood and protect the quality of life for the people that live in that neighborhood. So we were able to possibly, you know, the first thing you need to do when you look at trying to put a facility together, and it's not a city facility, by the way, it's, is funding. How can we fund, if we are able to identify a space, how can we fund that space, and what kind of commitment can we get? Is zoning impacted because of its private property? It would have to go through zoning, and we would have a lot of the same issues. No matter where you go, you're still going to have the issue of whatever, wherever you locate that type of facility, there's going to be pushback. There was pushback at St. Paul's, when it was on Orchard Street. I, as a business person at the time in downtown Middletown, opposed it. I disagree with some of the comments that these people are all coming from downtown, because they're not. They're coming from the region, and so it's not like it's a downtown, Middletown issue. The public facilities are located downtown, so people do hang out at the library during the day. They do use the soup kitchen, so they come from outside, they use facility, and then they go to wherever they need to go on these colder nights. So what we are able to do, and I'm happy to say that the group that we're talking to, we have the full support of the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council Pastor Rustico. He toured the facility with me, and with Maria Bruni and with Andrew. Also Rabbi Rubenstein, very cooperative and very supportive. We had a follow-up meeting today with the architect, who would be able to give us some cost estimates. Working with Maria Bruni, we were able to secure some federal funding. We hope ninety percent there on the use of the money. There are some terms and some conditions that we think we can all meet. Timing will be an issue, so the idea of maybe we have to, the facility may open in November, but I can probably almost guarantee you that the limited amount of construction that needs to be done in this facility, if it happens, we can probably get done in a couple months. So the interim, if this happens in the interim period, we will make sure that we have adequate police in that neighborhood. I think people have spoken loud and clear, it's not only the residents. We have a YMCA right across the street also, and we have bus stops. I think one lady spoke at the last meeting regarding the bus stop right in front of her house and at six forty-five in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning, and so, but I want, I want, again, as I open, I want to thank the neighbors for bringing this issue to the point that it's at, but I don't want to condemn the Middletown Interfaith Council or the Temple Sinai for their role either. So the act, the responsibility has shifted to us. We don't have the legal responsibility to house homeless. We will not be the operator of the facility. It'll be, continue to be the Middletown Interfaith Council. Fortunately, the money situation, if doable, credit with Maria and her office and Patty, then that makes it a lot easier to do. It would have to be using these federal monies, it would have to be a long-term commitment. Right now, we're looking at basically an eight-year commitment, whereas, I think the minimum was five, the maximum was eight, depending on the investment into the property, but I think it's doable. I think it's Pastor, oh geez, I just almost blew it.
You meant Rabbi, yeah.
Yeah, the Rabbi, yeah. The church that we're speaking to has been very cooperative, that's what happens when you talk too much, all right? Is, it's, there's a high probability that this thing will, will happen, so I want to assure all you that I believe it's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think in the interim period that the chief and I will be speaking about additional police protection. I think he addressed that at the last meeting, that when we have resources, we can, we can reallocate resources there, if possible, during the evening and morning hours, if we have to address some overtime issues in order to have somebody in that area when the exterior of the property is being admitted or released. I think the fact that, some of the facts that came out of that meeting, the fact that the Interfaith Council is going to have an armed guard certainly indicates that they have a concern also, so I think they would be very supportive of additional police presence. And, you know, it's not a kind of commitment that we can make for six months, but if we're talking about just a short period of time, I think we can, you know, weeks rather than months, I think it's something that we can assure the neighbors will be there. So I want to thank you, Andrew, for all the work you've been doing with us, and you and Maria also in the meetings that we've had, and, but it's very favorable, and I hope that, I hope that it does happen, and ignore what I said when I had my slip of the tongue, because I don't want you to blow the deal. All right, let me move on. So, let me open by congratulating Kate on her engagement. Congratulations. And it was a big ring, yes. Embarrass you a little?
We'll see how it reacts.
We are, we are working on our budget, and the numbers, as you know, are not good from, most communities are not good because the, as if you didn't hear today, the president has announced that he's cut off all negotiations with the Democrats regarding local aid and a stimulus package, and primarily because of the local aid issue. So this is not a Middletown issue, it's a national issue, so I believe that there will be some type of federal aid. I've said that all along to you, that it may not come before the election, at least according to the president today, but regardless, I think after the election, we will see it. So our budget is being prepared in anticipation of two things. One, we're not making any significant cuts in both emergency services or in general city, the general city budget. We will be doing some reduction through attrition when our sanitation program comes online because of the automation system that we're going to, but for the most part, we're anticipating revenues, the economy to bounce back. If the economy doesn't bounce back because of COVID, then we will have to address that sometime during 2021. I think the mantra nationwide is, is that if there is no federal stimulus, then you will then see local government having to lay off both police, fire, and sanitation and all the other services we provide. So I cannot see anybody in federal government letting that happen, especially nationwide. So I think we're going to be in a good place. We will probably exceed the two percent cap that we have met in the past, but due to a huge expense of police and fire retirement, I believe the additional bill came in at around six hundred thousand this year. For some reason, the stock market's so high, but for some reason, that pension fund, we were given a huge hit. The tax cap has risen to over three percent. So we believe we will be able to meet that three-plus percent tax cap as set by the state. We're being advised that it doesn't appear that there's going to be a rebate this year on the property taxes, even if you meet the cap, but we're going to try to meet it, just in case at some point they do reestablish that. So, but we're, we're hopeful that we'll be able to come in without any major reduction in services. The, well, let me move on to the PowerPoint. Last night, we had a, a meeting downtown with merchants and tenants and also residents in the downtown area, and as you can see, and the public can see when they ride through downtown, there's a huge investment being made, not only within the downtown, but it's expanding outside the gateways into the city also, into the downtown area, Highland Avenue, Franklin Street, Wickham Avenue, Grove Street, Rayward Avenue. So totally, we probably have well over a twenty million dollar investment, with the overwhelming majority of that being federal and state funded. The biggest block of that money was the Downtown Revitalization Initiative, which was a ten million dollar grant through Governor Cuomo that we received in 2016. We developed a plan that was submitted in 2017, and we began construction about a year ago on some of the facades and some of the major projects in the downtown area. That post-DRI award investment has resulted in this leveraging of this other money locally, and it's also, came with it was a hundred-plus apartment units being planned in the downtown area. So we're not only planning in the parking situation for today, but we're trying to address down the line. As you know, we didn't get funded for the parking garage, and that is somewhat of a blessing in disguise because of, we knew that if we were funded for the portion of the parking garage, it was only twenty percent, and the garage would have required in excess of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollar annual subsidy with conservative occupancy rates. So, so we, we were not, we were in a much better financial position last year when the application was submitted than we are this year, and we'll be going down the line. So this is one of the, there are fifty-four units proposing the old classy leather, and this, the blue spots on there are the properties that have been sold since the DRI investment. So the intent of Governor Cuomo was to inject money into a downtown and then stimulate private investment, and this is the seventeen million dollars of private investment, and you see buildings being renovated and housing units being created. So part of last night's meeting was to analyze the parking situation and to let people know what we're looking at as we prepare the parking management plan. And right now, in the Downtown Business Improvement District, we have approximately two hundred and thirty-seven main parking spaces on the street, and I'm just going to scroll through the parking lots and the streets, I mean, and let you know how much parking is basically on each street, and this is on-street parking. So all of that adds up to two hundred and thirty-seven on-street parking. Right now, it's a combination of fifteen-minute parking, two-hour parking, four-hour parking, and some areas unlimited parking, and so there's no coherent or cohesive message that we're giving. It's inconsistent throughout the district, so we're examining a few things. One, we're looking at the entire Business Improvement District on-street parking as two-hour limits with loading zones on each block, because we're having a problem with trucks being double parked, and we're looking at least one in each block from eight AM to eleven AM, that we had some feedback on that last night, where merchants can get their vendors to do a delivery during those periods. Those spots will be open. We have identified a few spots that we can even do delivery zones longer, but basically the idea is, is to stop the double parking. We're going to be applying handicap parking where the law requires. You know, each block will have a set amount, depending upon how many spaces. We have asked for merchant feedback on fifteen-minute parking. Is it useful? And we haven't had much code enforcement regarding parking enforcement since, you know, for many, many years now, but without enforcement, the general consensus is the fifteen-minute parking has been abused. Some of the options we're looking at for on-street parking, and this is technology that's being used all over the country, and again, this is more forward-looking, is, we are, in our 2021 budget, we are putting a parking control officer, and also the police have the capability, of course, of doing electronic a parking control officer and also the police have the capability, of course, of doing electronic chalking with the devices that we currently have. We're looking at kiosks and, and the kiosks also have apps. So people can download an app. You don't have to go to the kiosk. You can do it from your phone. If you're going to a restaurant, you're going to get your haircut. You can download it and you're, it's registered by plate number. We're looking right now for the, on the street parking, the first two hours free and in the parking lots, I'll get into a little bit later. Or we can continue without enforcement and, and I think everyone's in agreement that without enforcement, the employers, the tenants, the merchants, they take up the prime customer spots. And some of the feedback we've had from merchants, when we say to them, why do you park in front of your own business and take up the customer spot? They say, well, if I don't park there, the employees or the guy next door or that guy next door will park there. And you guys are just aren't enforcing it. So it becomes like you're chasing your tail. So it's a big circle we're trying to get across to the merchants because it's in the overall benefit for the entire business community that if you park in front of your own business and everyone's doing that and your employees are, it's going to be harder for your customers to come into downtown. So off-street parking, we have about 1,350 spots. We've identified short-term parking lots. Primarily, the first one will be James Street. That is probably the one that gets the most action. We've also been doing some tracking of parking lots from four times a day, starting between 6:00 and 7:00 AM in the morning and going to around 7:00 o'clock at night to see during this construction, where parking is being utilized. This is a, as you can see, the right side of the lot by motor vehicle is currently being used quite frequently. It's, the turnover has been very, very good with the two-hour limit and no commercial vehicles. These parking lots, this parking lot specifically, some have questioned, quote, "the design." And it's designed not only as a parking lot, but it's designed as part of our flood control plan. If you remember during some of the heavy rains, how downtown really got flooded. These are green, this is green infrastructure. There are rain gardens, there are pervious pavement, and there will be additional landscaping and trees added to it to beautify it. And, but the, so it's, this parking lot serves more than just parking purposes. We will have a net loss of about 20-something spaces, probably low to mid-20s in this lot. On the right side, we lost four spaces. On the left side, we're going to lose a little bit more because as you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, that will be the Heritage Trail. The Heritage Trail is coming through the, from Jerry's Park on, on North Street. There's been some controversy with the Crawford Manor and apparently in the past, and I, you know, I'm only going by what people have said to us, the operator of the facility has denied it, that when they rent to someone there, that they're being told that that parking lot is private parking for them and they can leave their cars there as long as they want. Well, it's always been two or four-hour parking. It's always been one night a week. We haven't, we require the vehicles to be moved for parking lot sweeping. So that's not the case by the signage, but apparently some people have been told that or misunderstood that to be the case. Just to give you, in case you're getting the same feedback, when this project was built in 2003, it was very clear that the city had no interest whatsoever in giving any dedicated parking in any public lot in the center of the city to any one building owner or any one tenant. The city has had contract parking in the past where we have provided it annual basis where you can have a guaranteed spot primarily on the perimeter lots, but not in the central lot. So this is the resolution that was passed in 2003, guaranteeing that building 14 spots at a very excellent cost of $50 per year, per spot. The intent was the Canal Street Lot, which is about 500 feet away from the front door of this building. Since 2003, not one person has exercised that option. So, and primarily, they've been parking in that lot. We, we have not enforced in the past, I say five or six years, that was, that was planned. So maybe we did encourage it a little bit, but when the lot is not full all the time, we didn't want to chase business out of town because we knew we were going to have a parking management plan and we knew we were going into a new construction period. The Henry Street back, lot back here, we will be adding a new parking lot in the corner of Union and West Main and behind the old equal, the original equilibrium and additional spaces on the side. The key here is, is that a lot of this lot historically has been filled with city employees and city cars that were not being used. We have removed all city vehicles from that parking lot prior to construction. They are being directed to park. We have leased, we reached an agreement with St. Paul's Church to lease their side lot. We've also created a 13-lot space on Mulberry Street behind Holy Dog for police vehicles or police personnel vehicles, not the, the private vehicles. And of course, we have the Canal Street Lot. So we think we're going to be okay. That lot will get a lot more use. And these are just other lots throughout the city. This is the Behind Something Suite new lot with a connection that has opened, it's lit. It's a sidewalk that goes right over to Orchard and you'll see the, the Orchard Street Lot is a brand-new lot, which is about 200 feet, 300 feet away from the Bruntford Downtown Lot and it has plenty of parking, plenty of new parking and right on the Heritage Trail. So our options are, on the short-term lots, it's three or four hours free. Anything longer would be a charge. So if an employee would have an option, they go park over by the Paramount for free for their eight hours while they're working or park in Canal Street Lot for free for eight hours, 10 hours, whatever time they're working. Or they can park in a short-term lot and for three hours, they're going to get it free. But after that three hours, they're going to get charged. And that's the only way we can turn lots over. We've done a lot of study on this. We've done, you know, we're not, you know, recreating the wheel. This is not only recommended, in fact, a three or four hours is a little bit longer than what some communities do. A lot of communities are doing two hours because sometimes it takes a little bit longer for enforcement. But we believe that this is the best way to go, but we're waiting for the feedback, you know, and we're flexible on some of these things. So once we get all the feedback in, we'll be making a presentation to the common council. This is the Orchard Street Lot that I just referred to. It's about, that's 38 spaces and, and right on the Heritage Trail. And across Robert Street is the new commuter lot, which is the Coach USA Lot, which has 184 spaces. So plenty of long-term parking, including Canal Street. The upper end of North Street has plenty of parking. We do lease parking from St. Paul's Church and we also lease parking in the back from the Masonic Lodge. The corner parking, which is 109 North, is right there. So we have adequate parking in our downtown area. The Washington Street lower parking lot by the Paramount is going to be that fence area. The rusty old chain-link fence is being torn down. Decorative fencing is being put in. There'll be some landscaping, new stairways, new lighting. So on event nights especially, we'll be able to use that lower lot, which is very much underutilized for when there's an activity at the Paramount Theater and those folks take up other spots in the downtown. So we believe we have a pretty good plan moving forward. 32 South Street, which is a little bit down across from the federal court, this is usually what it looks like. And it's just a, it's about an extra 100 feet from the Paramount Lot, which is full during the day. So our job is to be able to get people from one lot to the other and not to pull and see it full and then drive away. We need to do something, you know, we're, we're putting in new sidewalks. It's all under the grant. We're going to be doing, doing new lighting. So we're pretty confident with the plan that we're, that we're presenting. The options that we're considering, of course, are in each parking lot, the possibility of having a percentage of that lot be dedicated to residence parking or long-term, long-term parking will not be allowed. So we did tow one car from the James Street Lot during the construction. We towed it on a Wednesday. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, we did put notices on the vehicle that, this is in a two-hour or four-hour zone, that Wednesday, the construction is going to begin. The gentleman came in to see me on Friday and said, what happened to my car? You towed my car. And he said that his landlord told him the same thing, that that is all-day parking for downtown tenants and it's, it's not. And you can see the problem, that the problem is the guy was there for five days before he knew his car was even gone. He was a commuter into the city and that five days is an important time period for, for the people who are doing business there. This is some of the early morning parking lots, basically empty. One of the reasons for this is First Federal has been very cooperative with the, been a very good neighbor downtown. St. Paul's has been a great neighbor and we are, but that all has to end with the First Federal at some point and that will end when we open up the other side of James Street. We will be allowing overnight parking again in that lot. The other topics we addressed for downtown sanitation, the use of litter boxes as, not litter box, I'm talking about cats. I'm looking at Paul Johnson.
Oh, look at me.
I'm thinking of cats, right? Trash, the boxes where people are using them as the garbage depot, basically. And it looks horrible. It's not good for vermin control in, in an urban center. So we're going to be doing an educational process down there when the new, when the new cans come out and/or creating more depots like we have on Canal Street where people can bring their garbage there. But we really need to crack down on that because it's becoming more, it's another one of those situations where, why should I walk down the street around the corner to bring my garbage there when my neighbor just puts it on the front? And, and one of the restaurants is trying to have, you know, outdoor dining and we had that with one of the places, not my wife's, but it was another place, where the upstairs tenants kept putting out their garbage while the guy's trying to do business with outdoor dining, especially during, during the COVID situation. So we will be cracking down on it and we updated everyone on the architectural review requirements. So moving on to another topic, this is a picture at the, at the Middletown Recreation Center on Academy Avenue. The Mexican Council General was in town. They did a handout of baskets, 400 baskets of food and we had a meeting afterwards with them regarding economic development and listening to what they, well, they were listening to the needs of people that were part of the ABCD program. And of course, you know, ABCD is in the building that the city is selling. We have a condition of 18 months into that building and we're working with them. We're trying to work with the Council General and with New York State. Senator Metzger was there about funding opportunities to put another structure up within the city limits because of the, the great need this has to, that we have in the community for ABCD programs. Now, it's a head start program, basically. We operate two, we have two operating in the city. The COVID update is we are still number two in the county. So we're asking people to pay attention. As you can see on the national news, it's coming back. We're up to over 12, almost 12,500 cases and it's not a, the numbers are, are increasing. The governor came out today emphasizing the fact that local government must do their job. The example he gave was that I, that he has 5,000 state police and the New York Police Department has 35,000 police officers and that it's impossible for the governor's office to utilize state police to enforce the local COVID, or COVID regulations in local communities. We're experiencing the same thing here and our police department does do, when we get a complaint, we do respond to the business. We do, do our best in that area. Our numbers are high because we're a service community. A lot of people working in stores, a lot of people working in hospitals and nursing homes. But our numbers are high, but we do see a lot of cooperation with people. Our parks are open. We have not put up the basketball hoops. We're, and the reason why we haven't done that is because of the skateboard park, we're not getting a lot of cooperation from the young people at the skateboard park and I can imagine what it will be like if we put up the basketball hoops. All of our playgrounds are done seven days a week with the heavy-duty steamers that we purchased, using the COVID federal money. So we're pretty confident that we're keeping them nice and clean and sanitary. But for the most part, we, we need to be more diligent as a community. We are still number two on the list. And lastly, the Middletown School District issue is really getting a lot of attention about whether to offer the hybrid or make it mandatory, the hybrid situation, or give parents a choice. I understand there will be a meeting Thursday night. I've been in touch with one school official. Mr. Delmore and I have been exchanging phone calls. I just want to get what his thoughts are and give him the, the ideas of what we're hearing. I don't know if you folks are hearing it as individual aldermen, but I'm hearing it from parents and, and there are petitions being submitted and just, not to get in a battle with the school district, it's their call, but just to give them feedback on what we're hearing. So if you guys are hearing some of the same things, you should probably share it with me and I will share it with the school superintendent when we, when we do speak. We, we missed each other like two or three times today. Again, register to vote and census. Census is not over. Please do it. Our number-two source of revenue is based on sales tax distribution and we need everyone counted. Any questions?
Any question for the mayor, Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. So repetition is the key to learning. So I watched, last night I watched again, I think, I said last night, I think you and the chief and Commissioner Bruny did a great job. There's probably a good joke about the litter box thing, but it's probably at my expense. I'm going to let that lie. I just wanted to let you know, mayor, you've been kind of bugging me to bug Robin for the removal of the cats in the Washington Street area. There were some logistical challenges. Robin represents Dum Stray's Animal Rescue and she's monitoring our sanctuary at an undisclosed location and she assures me they'll be starting, she'll be starting to trap them this week and get them out of there in a timely manner.
Great.
And I had a general question on budgets. A nearby municipality was reported in the press about considering to go above their cap.
Right.
If you do that, when you're calculating the following year, does your cap then go up based upon last year or does it stay what it was in the previous year?
Well, the cap is a formula and there's, it's not only 2% of your levy. It's a formula that factors in like huge adjustments in costs. So school districts, there's a lot of exception, exceptions to the cap. A lot of their capital costs, that's why you can see school districts can still build cap, go in, you know, heavy capital investment because that interest may be exempt or, or the, there's different aid formulas. So 2% is not really 2%. With our community, 2% has basically been 2%. We're right around there, a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, mostly a little bit less. So we, we have to stay under those numbers in the past in order to get the local rebate.
Right.
It doesn't look like the local rebate's going to be available. We're, we're waiting for written confirmation. Don has been told that, but we're looking to see where it is in law, but we, we want to know where the, you know, is there a possibility? So we want to keep that option open and, but the, the idea of, of us raising it this year, whether it affects next year's cap is basically your question. I don't know the answer. I think Don can probably answer it, but it is a pretty convoluted formula.
I would imagine.
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
No.
I don't, I don't mind. It's up to the council president.
You can ask him a question.
Can I ask a mirror or have to go up?
Go ahead.
No, it's just, on the school, would the parents oppose with the kids coming back or they want to shut down permanently?
No, parents want a choice.
Okay.
Yeah, they want, they want to be able, right now, the, the way I understand it and, and I can sympathize with them because I have a six-year-old, I have a six-year-old grandson who lives with us and my mother, who's 91, also lives with us. So my grandson will not be going back to school.
Okay.
But we need to get a note from the doctor saying that there's a risk. Not everyone's in that position where they have a parent or someone with some comorbidities that can, they can get the exemption. So I believe that's the issue with the local district is some districts are giving them a choice and right now, but I, from what I've read from Doc, Mr. Delmore, is that he's not closed on the issue either. I think they're still looking at it, but there's some, voices are raising in the community. They want that option.
One last question on the parking, three quick comments. One, some of the employees work late at night, so they want to park closer to where they work so that, you know, they're not walking or being in danger and stuff like that. And the more spaces you have, like every space counts because that's extra revenue that will be coming into the city. And the last thing is during the snow times, making sure every spot's clean is so important.
Yep.
When the snow season comes and we lose spots, it really affects, you know, people coming in.
Sure. On the, the one part, the first part, there's a time limit on that also. After a certain hour, the, usually- After a certain hour, the, usually seven o'clock, I think, is what's being proposed. There is no time limit after that. So overnight parking will be allowed also in all lots.
Okay.
And each lot will have a limited amount of, at least what we're proposing, a limited amount of our, you know, longer parking in it. So might, you know, might be scattered, but it won't be all one lot.
Okay.
Okay?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Remarks of the department heads economic development?
I don't have anything to say.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW commissioner?
Reminder, the electronics drop off. It's gonna be a DPW. And so far, the date is October 24th. So whatever electronics you have, maximum of five units of TVs, computer screens, and so on, microwaves, you can bring them over to DPW yard of Manhattan Avenue. We will be confirming this date. We're going back and forth with the vendor to confirm it. But on the October 20th, I will remind everybody again if it's gonna be on for the 24th or not. It should be on, and we'll be sending out an Excel as well as a reminder. Regarding the reservoirs, Alderman, Massey, we are, as you know, the region, the region is suffering of really very, very low precipitation. Many communities around us, their wells are drying up and they are, they are in poor shape. Luckily, we are still okay. We are at 89% of our reservoirs right now. But really, we do pray for the rain because we need it very badly. And, you know, this is just a reminder of the change in weather and the global warming and what's happening to us. And we expect to have heavy rains, intense storms, and then we're gonna have periods of drought. And that's basically what's happening to us. So we have to, we need to fortify our system so that when we have the heavy rain, we will have the capacity to capture it and store it and then use it when we have the extended drought period. And that will be manifested with the indigo, hopefully, development as raw water source. To that, to that end, we have submitted the grant, we have submitted the water-taking application from the DEC. We have to renew this application every two years, so that was submitted at the end of last month. And we also submitted another safe yield study for the DEC because they requested that. Again, that was done last month, and that was based on dynamic analysis, not only static and mass ratio basis. And we believe that we have, you know, significant amount of water. The new study reinforced the older study with the same, with the similar conditions. So we're very optimistic about it, and we are continuing to pursue permanent water-taking permit from Mill Pond and from also skimming the indigo area. We've been in communication with the IPP, with the EPA regarding the IPP permit, which is industrial pretreatment permit for industrial users. And we had an issue with the town of Way Buanda, and with the help of Alex, he drafted the legal agreement. The mayor and I, we've been talking to the EPA. The EPA has been very supportive of our efforts, and Way Buanda now is working with us to finalize the agreement. So hopefully, the following meeting, October 20th, maybe we will have an intermunicipal agreement between us and the town for the, for the industrial users discharge permit and cooperation between the two of us. Because their sewage, part of the sewage of the town of Way Buanda discharges into the city wastewater treatment plant. We might also, we've been working with the DOT. There is a project for, for the bridge on eighty, Interstate 84 by McAfee Road. We have our outfall sewer. So there's a big, large section of our outfall sewer, 42 inches, which is the discharge of the wastewater treatment plant, Walker River. That's gonna be rerouted. So we're working with the DOT on that. After that, after that rerouting is done, they will be able to rebuild the bridge and construct the bridge there. Davish Park expansion, that contract is being signed. We just received the electrical contract signed today for the mayor's signature, and we're waiting for the GC to sign it. Once the GC signs it and we receive it, and that's expected, hopefully, tomorrow, then the mayor will sign it, then we will proceed into construction. We will have the preconstruction meeting with the contractors, and we will proceed. Traffic operations, that's, again, that's $18 million project. The mayor and I met with the design engineers. We walked some of the areas of interest in here to make sure that there are no gaps between all these projects that you can see around you. And I think that was a very, very successful meeting. And we are moving towards finalizing the design and going out for construction. And this will put together the streetscape and the downtown DRI-funded projects with the green infrastructure. Another project, which is the water lines in there, we're meeting tomorrow with the engineer and the contractor regarding the water lines coming from the water treatment plant down Manhattan. And with emphasis of getting the 12-inch main that goes through the park done first because the park expansion is gonna be taking place. So we want to focus on getting the 12-inch water main constructed, which is the one that supplies the city with water from the water treatment plant. ADA curbs and sidewalks, you can see them, they're being constructed all over downtown like the mayor was saying. And now we're working on Wickham Avenue, and that's gonna, you know, so people, please pay attention to the traffic, give the workers in there a chance to do the job in there because, you know, obviously, it's in our best interest, and also you need to keep the workers safe. So please take your time in there, you know, arrange your schedule accordingly so that you have plenty of time or find an alternate route to Wickham Avenue. And next year, we will be in Dawson Avenue as well, finishing this project, constructing brand-new curbs and sidewalks over there. The garbage truck, like the mayor was saying, they're with the robotic arm or mechanical arm. They've been ordered, and we thank you very much for all your support. Delivery date at this time is November next year. We're trying to push it forward, but that's, that's how backed up people are with the, with the manufacturing. Also, before you tonight is the leave pickup for the resolution. We request that you support that, and you always do. And another project is another, we have an agreement before you between us and the Department of Transportation for emergency disaster assistance. And that is for four years. And we don't need it right now, but God forbid, in the event of a disaster, then it will be implemented immediately. We don't have to panic and start asking for signature and agreement. This agreement will put everything in place so that if we need each other, us or DOT, if they need something from us or vice versa, we'll be able to implement it immediately up to four years. And with that, I will conclude. If you have any questions?
Alderman Massey?
Jacob, I want to thank you. I understand that you brought down, I requested the maps for the hydrants.
The water distribution system and the hydrants. Yes, sir.
Right. Down to central firehouse, I understand you brought two of them down there, one very large one and one a smaller one. I want to thank you for that. However, I was there on Saturday, and no one seemed to know where they were. I know the chief is here, and when he gets up, I'm sure he'll be able to tell me where they are. But I want to thank you and the paid men that were down there that use it. Said, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're very welcome. As you know, we, we did, I did, I met with the chief over there, and the chief knows where they are. And he gave directive to his people to put it in the control room. And I went in great details, explained to them, to the lieutenants, the paid firemen, how to look at the map, how to be able to advise the unit, the units in the field, where the water is, and which hydrants to use, which road it's on, and so on and so forth. So I think it was very successful. The chief, he stayed with me most of that presentation that I made to the, some of the paid firemen. I think they were, like you suggested, they're very happy. Now they understand it, will be happy to repeat the presentation anytime they want us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Johnson?
A quicker question. Wall Slayer Field, that's exciting. We're already in the fourth quarter. When do you think we're gonna start and when do you think we're gonna finish?
Never worry.
We're probably, we're gonna start this year, we'll finish next year.
Thank you very much.
Like, never worry. Thank you, Jacob.
Simple question, simple answer.
No, we're gonna have, with all seriousness, we're gonna have the preconstruction meeting shortly after the contracts. We tried to do-
So you're gonna get some infrastructure done before winter?
Sorry.
You're gonna get infrastructure done before winter?
We're gonna get started. I don't, we don't know, I need all the plans from both contractors, the electrician and the GC. And by the way, DPW will be doing the excavation for the electrician. We bid it that way in order to save money because the original bid was too high when we opened it. So DPW will be working with them to do the excavation. I have to see their, both of their schedule, discuss it with the project architect, and then we'll be able to give you more educated answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Your first answer was good.
Thank you, Jacob. Fire chief?
Just, good evening, everybody. September 20th, and it's gonna coincide, I believe, with the next council meeting. At 6:00, we're gonna do a recognition at Furman Joe's statue for the Fireman of the Year, Officer of the Year, and Rookie of the Year. And then I've asked the council president to put on the agenda for a recognition at the council here as well. I'm sure Alderman Massey will talk about the fire exam that's being held this Saturday. And I strongly encourage the council members to make Friday night inspection night. Like Jacob said, and I thank you for coming down to the firehouse. We had a bad leak. We did find out where it's coming from, but I do encourage you guys to, and ladies, I'm sorry, to make the trip. The firehouses do need to be looked at, you know.
What time?
We're meeting here at 5:45 on Friday night, and then we'll do our rounds through the fire police and the three firehouses. As far as the water maps go, Massey, I think you talked to all the wrong people and get all the wrong information.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I was there-
We do know where the maps are.
I talked to your assistant chief, number one, who said, he handed it to you. It was on a desk. And we looked through, they did.
Okay. You wanna let me finish before I interrupt?
Looked through the entire firehouse. There was none in the control room, not, not the one that should have been hung up or the other one. We actually went into your office.
Because you don't know the information. You only got partial information.
Well, I'm assuming when I ask another chief or the paid men that are down there on duty, where a specific thing is that they need, they requested, that no one knows where it is other than you.
If you let me finish, I'll explain it.
Well, then don't say I don't.
The lieutenants got together, and they put it in the lieutenant's office because they are going to take it and color-code it before it gets hung up in the control room. So it's easier to determine which mains are which by color.
Which will be very helpful.
So if you don't have all the facts, it's hard to comment.
Well, I went to get the facts. I thought at the right place.
You didn't talk to the right individual, I guess, as I said.
Well, maybe you want to inform the rest of the people in line, like the guy who's coming in to replace you as to what's going on.
And I did because I told him about the conversation that Jacob and I had.
No, you didn't ask if Saturday night, you didn't.
Again, I'm not gonna get into a pessimistic judgment.
Anyone else would like to ask a question? Thank you, chief. Police chief. Remember, he carries a gun. Don't argue with him.
Good evening. I just have one thing I'd like to just briefly discuss this evening unless any follow-up questions. This past Saturday, we did work with a local organization on a demonstration or protest. The protest was in honor of Breonna Taylor. It was a small group. We originally started working with one of the organizers earlier in the week. And when I tried to get an idea of what they wanted to do and aired my concerns and what was gonna be allowed and not allowed, it kind of went astray. So Saturday morning when we met, we didn't know how many people we were gonna anticipate for. The original conversation indicated that there was gonna be several hundred, so we had to plan accordingly. When they did show up on Saturday afternoon, there was a smaller group, so we, we overplanned, which was good at the time. So although it was a small group, I did learn a lot. I learned that a small group could cause a lot of havoc, and that's exactly what this group did. This group made us work harder for about 50 people than we have for several hundred people in previous protests. We ended up making an arrest after someone did violate our clearly identified rules. We met with the leaders that morning or that afternoon as well and explained to them what was gonna be allowed, what wasn't going to be allowed, and they did test our abilities. So I'm not bringing that up to say that we made an arrest. That's not at all why I'm bringing it up. I just want to bring to light that there's a lot of controversy going back and forth in social media right now about why we did what we did, why we had so many police officers on, on duty that day. And it was because we didn't know what to expect, and we have to plan accordingly because we, we don't know if we're gonna end up with several hundred people or as we did this weekend with 50 people. And again, as I stated, I learned a lot that a small group ends up being somewhat more work than a larger group. There's some chatter that there's going to be a follow-up one in either this weekend or the following weekend. So we're still trying to work with the organizers to see what they plan on doing. As a result of this past weekend's event, some of the organization did split because they weren't in agreeance with how the event was managed amongst themselves. So if you were out there and saw some of it, and you had a comment about the number of police officers, that is why. When we do plan for these events, we have to take into consideration not just the safety of the people that are going out to demonstrate and express their First Amendment rights, but we have to take into consideration all of the other people in the community as well and ensure that their safety is also considered. I was asked why we didn't close down the streets as we have done in the past. And if we recall, when we were closing down the streets earlier this year, it was during the peak of the COVID time when there wasn't a lot of traffic, it wasn't a lot of businesses open, wasn't a lot of movement going around on the street. That is now totally different. Our streets are very busy now. The streets that they wanted to use were our main thoroughfares that went into the town of Walke, down to 11, a very busy, busy street in a very busy time of day. So I wasn't willing, nor were the other police agencies involved, willing to close down the streets to do such. The instructions were that they were allowed to utilize the sidewalks and the shoulders of the road. That was not sufficient enough for their movement. And like I said, within the first few moments, probably within the first five, six minutes of the event, they began to press our, test our, our abilities, press their luck, and move into the street, in which we spent a lot of time trying to keep them off the street to allow the free flow of traffic, to allow business to continue operate, and the other members of this community and surrounding communities to freely flow throughout the streets. That's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. City clerk?
Just a reminder, the first resolution tonight is the resolution that we do every year, and that is to move the council meeting from November 3rd to November 2nd because of Election Day. And speaking of Election Day, again, I'll remind everybody that the early voting starts on October 24th for the whole week at the senior center. And you can check the times, there are different times every single day that they're gonna be open and closed. So please check our website on the hours on, that's all I have.
Okay. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Burr, John Francois, Alderman Kusum.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Johnson?
Well, I checked with Mr. Massey, and we decided that since Alderman Kleiner wasn't here, that I could probably use some of his time.
I didn't hear what you said, Paul. But I'd wanna, I'd wanna be careful. What?
Oh, I forgot to ask you. I'm sorry. I forgot to ask you.
The Yankees are on.
So that means you only have three minutes. Okay.
What did, what did he say?
Mayor, I share your concern about-
He had his permission to use-
Yeah, I only have three minutes. I just lost 12 seconds.
What, did you have your permission to use?
Now it's 16 seconds.
Had he had your permission to use?
Now it's 30 seconds.
Oh, go ahead.
Are you guys ready? Okay. You know, with respect to federal aid, maybe you've always been optimistic. You know, with respect to federal aid, Mayor, you've always been optimistic, from your mouth to government's ears, I hope that will work out. Warming Station, I think I voiced my opinions at the last meeting, I'll let that lie, in deference to Mr. Massey's consternation. But indirectly, I got to, through no connection of the two, I got to have a tour of the Salvation Army Facility on Sunday, spoke with Major Moore. By full disclosure, I reminded her that I cited her comments during our meeting, we agreed to disagree, and basically, the, the topic of conversation was the efficiency and collaboration for food distribution, which was a good conversation. With respect to the young man at the microphone, it's always, you let it go, you, you address it, fairly indiscreet most of the time, so I'm gonna address it. Is he allowed to say whatever he wants? Yeah, within limits, as determined by the President of the Board during this meeting. Am I allowed to say what I want? Yeah, within limits, as determined by the President of the Board. Do I think his comments are misguided? One hundred percent. Do I think sometimes people, the only way they can put themselves up is to put other people down? I do, and that's my opinion. He was very talented, and in that four minutes, he cast dispersions on the entire council, the mayor, and my esteemed colleague from the Third Ward. We can all speak for ourselves, suffice it to say, I take exception to those comments, and the other things I need to say are probably not suitable for public consumption. With respect to the schools, I read the article with interest, you know, Mr. McElroy was on the board for a while, so he probably has good communication with the soup. I have a special respect for the soup, yes, a hundred fifty years ago, I was on the board that hired him as a principal, he came from Texas, we still have a good working and friend relationship. I, I thought to myself, it was a good quote, when he said it was a strong, strong possibility that they would consider other options for the parents, and I think, I think he's doing the best job any superintendent can. If there was ever a conversation about walking my shoes, try those shoes on for size, and see how you think it's gonna work out for you. Thank you very much, I yield my thirty seconds to Mr. Green.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much, and I give you thirty seconds, Alderman Johnson. I do want to thank everyone who came out this evening from the, from the neighborhoods surrounding the warming station and Temple Sinai. Thank you, Mayor, for not divulging our meeting, the location, but no, for, you know, really helping us work with the interfaith council, and, and, you know, work on making sure that the neighbors feel safe and secure as they do, you know, for, for the time being, and also that with regards to a new location, we can find one and, and really serve the community the best that all the involved parties can. Monday, the 12th, we're supposed to have a, a second more constituents meeting. It is right now, we're planning to do it earlier, it is Columbus Day, and it is getting darker earlier. So Monday, the 12th, you know, we will plan to have a constituents meeting at Davich Park, same area, Lions Pavilion, but we will check on that. If anything changes, and the secure date, we will have it out on Facebook, we will ask City Clerk to put it on the website, you know, we just wanna go through and make sure that with the holiday, and with the daylight waning early, that we, we get everything together. And that's it for this evening, thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
Just unrelated to the warming station at the Lions Club, we, our last business meeting, we agreed to purchase a electric static sprayer, we bought from China, that will disinfect the area very quickly, it charges the particles and kills the COVID. As far as the school, I did hit some calls about the school, and forward demands to the governor's office and other places. I think, I understand Delmore's position, or any school, I mean, the kids not being in school is hurting them, but until there's a vaccine, I think the governor said, until the parents feel comfortable, and the teachers feel, feel comfortable, the schools shouldn't be open. And not everybody's gonna feel comfortable, but until there's a vaccine, I don't think you should require a doctor's note in order to keep your child back from school, I think that should be a choice, and I think they should offer the virtual option, that's my opinion, especially with all the technology we have here in Middletown. I think another district is Cornwallis, in the same boat, and the parents are really fired up, I think you have to serve your community. And Chief, I want you to, I, I've been thinking about this thing that's going on in Denver, and I know it didn't happen here, but I do believe in free speech, though if you do wanna practice civil disobedience, you need to be willing to, you know, face the consequences. But I know out in Denver, they charged several student protesters that are protesting, I think Breonna Taylor's death, with multiple felony charges, and that's a way of, to basically, not, they'll probably all get dropped, but a way to stifle free speech and chill free speech, and I don't believe in that, not that we're doing that here, but, you know, we do have to be alert throughout the country, that, you know, free speech is something that this country is founded on, and that we have a right to. And so, we do have the right to protest, but I believe, I'm totally against the violence and the rioting, I think that's uncalled for, but just wanted to bring that point up, thank you.
Alderman Massey?
As the Fire Chief said, we're giving the test this Saturday for firefighter, it was originally scheduled for April 25th, but due to the virus, it was put off. And anyone that's coming to take that, be aware that there are some restrictions, you must, and we put it in the letter to them, must wear a mask, and you'll have to wear a mask through the entire test. The final thing is, I wanna thank all the department heads, as the mayor said, we're in budget hearings now, the process in the last week and a half, the mayor, myself, and the treasurer met individually with all the department heads, and none of them came in with any outrageous demands. So we've gone through that, and I believe tomorrow, we're starting the second round for the larger departments, so I wanna thank them, and I wanna thank the mayor.
It's on tape, you got it.
New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to reschedule the common council meeting from Tuesday, November 3rd, to Monday, November 2nd, due to Election Day.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, to schedule the general citywide cleanup for the period for leaves.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second by Alderman John Francois, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, to adopt a juvenile curfew during the 2020 Halloween period.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, second by Alderman Cassoon, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to amend the city code, Chapter 460, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 460-28, Handicap Parking.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Massey, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoon, to authorize the treasurer to repurpose ninety-one thousand dollars for the South Street Parking Lot Project from the downtown improvement and demolition.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoon, second by Alderman Green, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, to authorize the treasurer to transfer within the Police Department 2020 Budget, two thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars, to fund the cost to set a forty-foot pole for service located at the pole barn.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, second by Alderman Burr, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, to authorize the Commissioner of Public Works to sign a shared service agreement between the New York State DOT and the City of Middletown, to facilitate disaster assistance as need arises for a term of four years.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, second by Alderman Green, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the treasurer to transfer forty-one thousand dollars from the general fund balance, to fund the street lighting account which is depleted.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Tobin, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, to authorize the treasurer to transfer fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the mortar fund balance to purchase a Polaris Ranger with accessories from Cycle Motion for the reservoir trails.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second by Alderman Massey, any discussion?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes. That's all for new business.
Local laws?
Tonight, we have an introduction for a local law, sponsored by Alderman Johnson. This is local law number four of 2020, exempting seasonal part-time employees from the Middletown Ethics Code.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to wish warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Tobin, roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez, resolution passes.